And welcome to Merrimack Town Meeting. There's still plenty of good seats. We have quite a full agenda for tonight, so I wanted to get us started as promptly as we can. My name is Bob Bender. I'm the town moderator. With me is Pat True, the town clerk. And the two of us handle the paperwork and the presiding over the meeting tonight. The selectmen are here. Earl Baumgartner, Rick Pinciaro, and Laura Mailman. And they have approved and posted a warrant for a special town meeting and for the annual town meeting. The annual town meeting, we will start soon after we're able to get to work on the special town meeting, which is pretty short. Those of you who are not familiar, I hope you picked up the handouts, the many handouts out front on the -- outside the door there. But especially one that says on the finance committee report. That one really has in it the guide to what we're doing tonight. Inside the cover is a letter from our finance committee. And I want to thank those members who worked so hard on this report this year and those that are here tonight. The finance committee is an independent body that the town moderator appoints to come up with a recommendation to town meeting on the various articles of financial matters. And they put together this report for you so that you can see what the town departments are requesting and what the finance committee thinks that our income will afford, and they make recommendations to you. And when we get to the omnibus, which is Article One of the regular town meeting, the finance committee will actually come forward and will present you with that omnibus, which is, you know, basically the overall budget, the largest part of our budget. So inside the finance reports, you'll see after the introductory letter, I guess you call it page four, you'll see there's -- starts off with caption, "Special Town Meeting, April 29, 2013." And that's where we will begin. That runs for one, two, three, four pages. I think you see a grid that's titled, "Annual Town Meeting." And that lists all the articles. And behind that, you see the familiar, many columns of the omnibus. So if people have that document, it kind of gets found out where you are and what's going on. After you go through that grid of 92 lines, you come to the articles at the annual town meeting. That finishes out the booklet. Before we call it matters to order tonight, I want to recognize our new state representative. I know many of you remember Harriet Stanley, who served Merrimack for many, many years. And she retired and didn't run for election this year, but our new state representative from Georgetown is here. Lenny Mira, you want to stand up? We're very glad that you could come tonight. Appreciate that Georgetown has a slightly different schedule than Merrimack.
Wes Newbury.
Huh? Wes Newbury. Wes Newbury doesn't, but Georgetown does. Huh? We will claim him, yes. We have some Georgetown employees here and all that. My apologies. Now I remember now. We had a big election between two Wes Newbury people, and you must be one of them.
Your powers of deduction.
All right. You know, I'm so focused in on what happens here in Merrimack that until they open the bridge, I'm not really sure what happens down there in Wes Newbury. All right. Well, anyways, I was just going to say, Merrimack Town Meeting, for those of you who are not so certain, runs according to the general laws of the state and the town meeting time, which is a book of many years' service to the moderators of New England. Robert's rules is they can be applied to town meetings. I mean, Robert's rules really are what the United States Senate runs on, and we don't try to follow that too closely. And then there's local practices that we follow here in Merrimack. And that's, please don't speak to the town meeting unless you've been recognized, and please don't speak to other people, because the rest of us can't hear what the people who are speaking will say. Please talk to the issue. I mean, that means that you can all have lots of different points of view on something, but try to talk on the thing that we're talking about and not something else. Try to add to what's being said. You know, we don't need the same thing said over and over again. People here do listen to you. So try to say something that hasn't been said. Add something to the conversation. And lastly, we're pretty informal here, as you may notice, on the use of terminology. We don't go that you have to use the magic words of the Senate. You know, if you tell us, tell me what it is you're trying to do, what your motion is and what your objection is, your problem is, we'll get it taken care of. And finally, speak to the room. Even if you have a question for the Board of Selectmen or for the police chief or whatever, address your question to the room or to me, and I'll call on someone to answer the question. All right? This isn't really an opportunity, it's not really meant to be a debating thing where you can call out somebody here like, and argue with them about how things are going on in town. This is a place to state what your opinion is, to state what your question is, and we will turn around and find someone that can answer it or address it, that wants to speak to it. So it's a conversation that way. It's not an argument, it's not a debate. All right. The other thing I want to do right before we call it to order is to remember for a moment those who have served in public office in the town of Merrimack and passed away since our last town meeting. Philip Hagopian, the building commissioner, Dorothy Doughty, the school nurse at the Dunne Hill School, Arthur Duplessis, a building inspector, and Alan Hassick from the planning board. And I want to add to those our thoughts and prayers for those that two weeks ago were so hurt, even killed, in Boston.
How about Doc Coit?
And Doc Coit? Add Doc Coit to the list, too. All right. Call it order, the special town meeting for April 29, 2013. Do you have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from free cash a sum of money in the amount of $609,241 for the following specific purposes outlined below. $80,000 to purchase a new ambulance and necessary equipment for the fire department. This article's in combination with Article Two. B, $175,000 to purchase and install communication infrastructure for the public safety department. C, $5,000 to purchase a VHF-based radio for the 24-hour dispatch if Item B is defeated. D, $50,000 to purchase a one-ton truck with plow for the DPW Department Highway Division. E, $28,000 to purchase a lawnmower for the DPW Department Parks and Recreation Division. F, $14,000 to purchase necessary equipment to outfit an existing truck in the DPW Department Water Division for use by the Cemetery Division. G, $20,000 to request additional funds for the repair or replacement of cemetery wall on Church Street. H, $7,950 to purchase of three tablets, software, and accessories for the Board of Selectmen. I, $4,533 to purchase fixed asset software and associated implementation costs for the town accounting system. J, $8,000 to make necessary repairs to the exterior of the senior center, including repairs to siding, rotting wood, doors, and painting. K, $4,000 for firearms maintenance for the police department. L, $72,586 to appropriate one-third of the balance of free cash to the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund. M, $72,586 to appropriate one-third of the balance of free cash to the stabilization fund. N, $72,586 to appropriate one-third of the balance of free cash to the capital stabilization fund.
Second. All right. So if you follow along that list, that's on page one, two, three, four, five. It's at page five, Special Town Meeting. See Article One there, a list of 16 or so items, A to N. Does anyone have any questions there? You've seen the rationales that are put on the finance committee. Does anyone have any questions over any one of these lines? Yes, sir. Want to step to the mic?
I think you're following.
You can pick the mic up. It comes right out. But please hold it up. I'll try to swallow it almost.
Okay. Thank you. Concerning Item B, what does, is someone here able to comment on what the lifetime of $175,000 radio is? I didn't see them. What's the projected life of the asset?
I'm sorry. You pulled it up, you really hold it up. I can hear you when you don't.
The $175,000 for the public radio, what is the projected life on the asset? Somebody can comment on that.
Okay. Well, I see we have Deputy Chief, you want to come by the mic? Did you hear what the question is? What's the life of such a radio equipment?
Yes, the radio itself, I mean, there's multiple radios.
Can you hold that really up, right up on your chin?
The life of the radio varies depending on the physical radio itself, if it's a portable, a base station, or a mobile radio. The radios that we're looking at are base radios. So they're supported by the manufacturer for about 15 years, and then after that, they have a phase-out program, but that's about what it is at this point. I think that's what you want to know.
Are there any other questions about any of these items? One to 16. Well, some of these, we're going to have to vote separately because they have two-thirds votes. And Item C, we aren't going to vote on unless we don't like Item B. So first thing I'd like to do is bring to a vote everything except for B, C, M, and N. Bob, Carol, Mike, and Nathan. So all in favor of the other articles, the other lines? All opposed? All right, those are adopted. Now, as to line item B, all in favor of $175,000 of free cash for the radios? All opposed? That is also approved. Take it, we'll accept the tabling, Item C. All in favor of tabling, Item C? All opposed? That is tabled. As to M, Mike, and N, Nathan, this is to put money into stabilization funds, and we use a two-thirds vote to put the money in, because it takes a two-thirds vote to take it out. So as to M, Michael, to put $72,586 into the stabilization fund, all in favor? All opposed? Being none opposed, it's unanimous. And as to N for Nathan, $72,586 to the capitalization stabilization fund, all in favor? All opposed? It is unanimous and approved. That completes the work on Article One.
Article Two. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from ambulance stabilization fund a sum of money in the amount of $55,000 for the purchase of a new ambulance and required equipment.
Second. See, at the bottom below, Item N is Article Two. $55,000 to take out of the stabilization for the ambulance, so that money can be used to purchase a new ambulance and equipment. And it goes along with the Item A in Article One. Are there any questions about Article Two? Just to be safe, we'll ask that there be a two-thirds vote to take money out of stabilization. All in favor? All opposed? Seeing opposition, it is approved unanimously. Yes, Ed?
I have one question. How much is the all going to cost?
How much is it all going to cost? We just put --
Eighty thousand.
Well, it's eighty thousand plus the money in One A, which was --
Eighty-five.
Yeah. You put them together. Looks like it's eighty and eighty.
Article Three. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from wastewater retained earnings a sum of money in the amount of $54,900 for the following specific purposes outlined below. A, $35,000 to purchase a three-quarter ton four-by-four pickup truck for the DPW Department Wastewater Division. B, $17,000 to purchase 50 percent of a computer and soft, of a computer and software for a centralized utility billing system for the water and wastewater operations. C, $2,900 to purchase a telescoping boom crane for the DPW Department Wastewater Division.
Second. All right. It's been moved and seconded under Article Three. Three more line items used to be paid for from the retained earnings of the wastewater department or enterprise, a total of $54,900. Just short of $55,000. In the, for Items A, a pickup truck, B, computer software, and C, a boom crane. Any questions about any of these? Yes, ma'am? Can you come by the mic?
Yes, I would like, I would like to speak, I would like to speak to this if I could as it relates to this article as well as Article Four D.
Well, why don't we speak to Three? But I can see that the Four D is the other half of the computer money, so --
Well, that's right.
Just say half of the stuff now.
So, okay, okay.
But please, you can take the mic off and bring it right up to your mouth, because that way we'll all be able to hear your fine points. These work better, if you like, on American Idol, right up there by your chin.
Oh, no, I don't do that.
There you go. You don't have to watch, you just have to sing.
That's what I don't do.
All right.
Okay. No. I understand the concept of wanting to save money, but what I would like to know is, at what cost? Would it be at the cost of job loss from the staff at the Light and Water Office that has been handling all of the services that we know for the last century? Would it be at the cost of the ratepayers who have been able to rely on the combined staff at the Light and Water Office to help them with questions, concerns, whether it be a question about a bill, water quality, contractors' questions, whatever it might be? They vary. There are so many facets to the job. It's not just about sending out the bills, collecting the money, and tracking that info. It's about the years of combined knowledge that each and every member of the staff has learned throughout the combined 60 years of service to the department. And no person, unless they know this town and have done this specific type of work elsewhere, will be able to provide the service that the rate, that the water ratepayers have come to know. There is such a learning curve that is going to require a dedicated amount of time, and there hasn't even been any discussion, at least as far as I know, as to how this new employee, I guess that hasn't even been mentioned yet, is going to be trained and learn everything that they need to know. If the light department is out of the picture, who at Town Hall has all the background knowledge to train this new person? As past manager of the department, I have seen and been involved with all the upgrades to the water department system. And that is with utilizing the same hardware and software company for the past 32 years. And sometimes those changes were not so pretty, but it took every person in the department working together to work out those bugs that are going to happen whenever you convert a system, which is what the town is looking to do. I don't care what a software company tells you, it's going to happen that way. It's not, it's never easy. So my question is, is the town going to hand a new system conversion over to a new employee, an individual who is going to have to do this solo? Because I understand that you're looking to hire a 30-hour-per-week employee to do this, to take over the water department office work. So all this is going to be done while still answering the day-to-day calls. I just don't know how this can possibly work out to benefit the town. I guarantee you that the proposed 30-hour employee will not, as an individual, be able to handle a conversion, day-to-day issues, billing, collection. This will develop into a full-time position at a minimum. And I also wonder who will take over when this employee is out on vacation or, heaven forbid, has a health issue that renders them incapable of working for any period of time. Just think about this, please, before you vote this tonight. The light department just learned of this a few weeks ago, and I don't believe there have been, has been any discussion amongst the departments to figure out how this could transition into something beneficial to the town or its ratepayers. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Linda. I'm sure there's some people who have a little bit of an idea of what you're talking about, and other people who just look at this as a line about a computer. So you think you can explain what the connection is without reading your speech again?
Well, I think perhaps it's up to the town officials to explain that. But from what I understand, the Light and Water Office has handled, as everybody knows, all of the water billing, water collections, and anything, any questions that come into the office are handled by the Water, the Light and Water Office employees. That has been, as I understand it, because I have not been a part of this for the past few years, but over the past few years, the town has paid the department a certain amount of money annually for, to contract those services. It is my understanding the town looks to benefit now by reducing their costs. That's what they are hoping to do. I don't know the amount that they are looking to reduce costs by. However, they are looking to hire a 30-hour-per-week employee who will be employed at the Town Hall to take over all of this work. That's my understanding.
Well, that would be part of the Water, the Water Enterprise budget?
That's correct. That's where --
The person is not in this article.
No, it isn't. But I thought before, before we agreed tonight to even --
No, it's fine to bring it up. I just want people to understand, you know, when you look at it, it doesn't talk about personnel at all. It just talks about a computer system.
That's correct.
And you're making the point that there's more to it than that.
Yeah. So why even, why even go the step of approving the cost of the software if we don't want to employ someone at Town Hall to do the job?
All right, thank you. Does someone want to speak to this?
Yeah. I think as most of you probably know, in 2010, we created a Department of Public Works, at which time we separated the Light and Water Departments. The Light Department continues to stand alone as a separate department. The Water and the Sewer Department were rolled up under the Department of Public Works. As is today, and as was, has been in the past, the billing and collections has continued to be done by the Light Department on a contract basis for the Water Department and the Sewer Department. We have had, over the last three years, multiple conversations with the Light Commissioners and the Light Department Manager regarding the amount of that contract fee that we're charged, and it's passed on to the Water and to the Sewer ratepayers. After the last conversation didn't seem to bear much fruit, in which we told them, frankly, that we believed that we were being overcharged for that service, we decided to go out and look at what would it take to pull that billing and that responsibility for collections and the things that Linda just talked about, what would it take to pull that in under the DPW, if you will, and do that as a standalone at Town Hall for the Water and the Sewer Department. We found a software program that is being put before you right now, that will be shared costs between the Sewer and the Water Department. There is indeed an employee that will need to be hired, but we did the calculations and believe that there's a three-year payback on the cost of the software that we'll need to purchase, and that after probably two and a half years or so, we'll realize about a $10,000 a year savings in what we're currently paying the Light Department to provide this service on behalf of the Water and Sewer ratepayers. So we thought that it was only fair that we bring this forward and let Town Meeting make the decision as to whether or not we continue to have the Light Department provide this service at a higher rate, or if we move forward under the DPW auspices, buy the software, hire the employee, and save the Water and Sewer ratepayers about $10,000 a year.
So, standing up?
James Young, Willowdale Drive, current Light Commissioner. I disagree with Mr. Baumgartner's comments. He may have had discussions with the manager. We have had one discussion with us. The Water and Sewer has billed 40, between $40,000 and $45,000, I believe, for those services. That does not cover the cost of one full-time employee and does not include health benefits or pension obligations. So based on that fact alone, the Water and Sewer is getting a deal based on the amount of work done. One of the problems that I see is the lack of communication, whoever's responsibility that is, about going forward with these plans. When this occurred five years ago, which was before my tenure, as far as I am, as far as I am aware, this all could have been dumped in the Water and Sewer's lap without any warning whatsoever. But that was decided that that would not be in the best interest of anybody. So this continued up until today. These figures that are talked of, I don't believe are true. I'm not going to argue the points, but I just wanted to make everyone aware of the Light Department's view of this. I think that it could be a much better plan if you took a long-range view and worked together with the Light Department more effectively. You could, for instance, take a future retirement of one of the Light Department employees and train a particular individual and do a lot better job that way, and do a lot better by the ratepayers, both Light and Water. But I disagree vehemently with Mr. Baumgartner's comments. Thank you.
Back, yep. You want to talk, please?
Carol?
You don't have, yes. You had something to say?
I was just curious if, Earl, your comments were validated in any capacity with the Light and Water Department. That's what I was curious, if there was communication we're now having here.
With all due respect to Mr. Young, this conversation has been taking place for quite some number of years. Mr. Young was not a part of a lot of those conversations necessarily. However, this is not new. This is not something that we just came up with in the past few weeks. This has been an ongoing dialogue that we've been having with the Light Commissioners and with the previous Light Department Manager. It's been made quite clear to us over the length of those years of conversations that there is no room for negotiation, there's no room for change, that -- there is no room for negotiation, there's no room for change, that the fee is the fee, take it or leave it, and we think that it's only fair to the water and the sewer ratepayers that we come up with a better way, a more cost-effective way, and a cheaper way to provide the billing and the services.
All right. Ed?
Can you hear me? Okay. I, I think it's great that, it sounds good that you're gonna save $10,000, but I'm looking at it from another way. I know there's always been a battle between town hall officials and the light and water department for one thing or another. Now it's, hey, I'd like to save $10,000 like anybody, but no one's addressed, talking about hiring a person to do this work, and they're right, there's gonna be benefits and everything, but let's look at it from the other end. If you're taking this work away from the light and water department now, which they put in substantial hours, it sounds like someone could be losing their job over there. And I'm telling you right now, for $10,000, I'm not gonna vote this article in to save $10,000 and see someone at the light and water department lose their job, because it's part of the whole thing. Take all this work away, and, you know, maybe they're gonna lose an employee over there. So, I think that has to be taken into consideration, hiring a new person. Someone else go? Uh-uh, not Michael.
Well, we got some of them.
Hello? Just wanted to clarify, it's not $40,000, it's $60,000. The rates that we are charged from the light department do include all the benefits, it's a loaded rate, so the rates that we are charged include all the benefits, retirement, everything, insurance, everything. So it's not just, it's not a break like you thought it was. It's about $40,000 a year in salary benefits, overhead costs from the light department, and then another $20,000 in shared materials and leases for the copier, postage, et cetera. So, just to clarify the numbers. Thank you.
Yes.
Sorry about that. Just to kinda jump in here a little bit.
Please, I think you better speak up.
Yeah? That better? Okay, sorry about that. To Earl's point and to Carol's somewhat, in the five years that I've been on the board, we have had many discussions with the commissioners as well as the former light department manager. One of the things that we had asked is that the, the commissioners consider partnering up with the, with the Board of Selectmen in regards to some of the fees that, that they, not fees, some of the expenses that they generate. One of my pet peeves has been the expensive copier leases, just to use that as a quick example. We had our, we had Andy Jimenez in town hall do a comprehensive study on copier leases and where the deals are. We shared that with Dan Folding, the prior manager. Didn't get any traction. We, when the, when we were getting, we're still working on the DPW department and consolidating some services, one of the things that was happening in the water department was permitting. And we pulled the permitting out and we put it downstairs in inspectional services to be able to make it a lot more efficient for, for that particular aspect of what has to happen through the water department on a regular basis. And there wasn't really, you know, and we worked closely with Julie and the light, in the water, you know, in the light department, and being able to find, you know, figure out a nice way of that being able to happen for that transition. But unfortunately, that seems to be the only example where we've had some, we've been able to, you know, sit down at the table together and have some meaningful discussion over all the various expenses that are just getting, that are, you're getting contracted for on the light side, but not being discussed with the Board of Selectmen on our side as to how we're helping to expense those out of the water and sewer budget. So, and as far, to Ed's point, I, I mean, I, I agree, you know, saving $10,000 versus somebody, the loss of somebody's job doesn't seem to be equitable. But if we're assuming for the moment that somebody is going to lose their job, what's to say that that person wouldn't be applying for this new position and be the right person for it? So, and, and that would address a lot of the issues that Linda had just brought up as far as knowledge, experience, et cetera. So, you know, that's another thing to be able to think about, as far as this goes. It's my two cents word.
Yes, sir.
My name is Richard Hamel. I think the ladies' point is very well taken. I moved to the table the item which is three, D.
This is, it's B. B for Bob.
Right.
All right. All right. I, I wanna, I wanna do this, before we discuss the tabling. These three items are voted, were put on the table together. We can't table a piece of it without deciding what to do with the rest of it. So, I wanna ask, does anyone have anything they wanna say about A, the pickup truck, or C, the boom crane? Because if not, I wanna just vote those, and then we can decide what to do with B. Does anyone have any questions on, on A or C, the truck or the crane? All right, all in favor then of taking from retained earnings $35,000 for the pickup truck under A, and $2,800 under C for the boom crane? All in favor? All opposed? All right, those two are approved unanimously. Now, there's a request that we table B, which would mean that we won't vote on it at all, it'll come back at another meeting sometime, or not at all. Is there a second to that? Does anyone wanna speak to that, about whether we should do that tonight or not? Yes, sir.
I think if you're gonna table that one, you're gonna have to move down to table also four D, which is the other half of it.
Well, we'll, we'll get to that in, in due time. Yes.
My only concern, if we table it, it won't ever get decided, and nothing will get done. So, that's my only concern, if we do table it.
Anyone else wanna speak to this? All right, to, to table, to table it, that's a demonstration of a boom. All right. All right, to, to table, to table an item so that we don't take it up at the town meeting, takes a two-thirds vote. If we, if we do, it's tabled, then we won't take any, we don't further consider it. If it's not tabled, then we'll actually get to decide the issue tonight. You have a point of order, Mr.?
No, I have a question.
Yeah?
I have a question. In the event that we went forward and purchased this software, is it at all possible, because the concern seems to be-
Okay, speak on the mic, please.
The concern seems to be Julie's position. Now, the question I have is if we continue and we purchase this equipment and software, is this something that one can be installed over at the light department, where they do the billing? And if so, that will cut down on some of the cost of duplicating efforts, which seems to occur constantly. And where we're not making journal entries, chances are there'll be less chances for any kind of mistakes or oversights. So the question is, is if we move forward, is there an option for buying this software, which when we bought the software for town hall, it was bought with the intent to bring these additional modules onboard to consolidate? So, can we kinda consolidate by using the software at a remote location?
Well, I, I'm, I'm not really sure that you're asking for something that's not actually an amendment to, to this article, because the article was pretty specific on how it was gonna be, how the, where the system was going and what was happening with the money and what was going on with the employee and so forth. So, if, if you wanna make an amendment to it-
No, just that central light billing.
That's fine, so moved. Well, what, what exactly is your amendment, Bob?
The amendment would be, is in the, in the event, like I was stating, is if we can bring the software package onboard and use it remotely.
Remotely?
And whether Julie, I guess would be using it at the current light department.
All right. I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to ask that your amendment be held to see if we're actually gonna take up this article or not. The, the tabling motion is really what's before us, and while you, what you're saying might be a reason not to table and, and have more discussion tonight, it's really not proper to vote on your amendment or discuss your amendment till the tabling is decided. Do you have something you wanna say about tabling, sir?
Not about tabling, I just wanted to mention the software and billing already exists, and that's what's puzzling, to me anyway. I just think there's a better way. The, the software and billing already exist the way it's done now, and it's, you're looking to purchase new software to do it a different way, if, if, if I understand correctly. So I just wanted to make that clarification to people that may not know that.
Oh, thank you. I, I assume people figured that there was some way we were doing it already, and, and we'll find a way to do it in the future. All right, the request is, the motion is, is to table this. It can be brought back at another special town meeting, it can be brought back in the fall, it can be brought back not at all, wherever it works out. But all in favor of tabling this and ending the discussion on this item B? Lay your hand, all in favor? And all opposed, tabling it? Well, two-thirds are needed to table, and I don't see two-thirds, so the request to table fails. So we'll return to what Mr. Sinnebaldi asked, which is whether this can be amended with something specific. I, uh-
Carol.
Well, I'd like to get the, the amendment stated. You have, you have anything I can write down here, Bob? Because it's, this is not a simple thing you're talking about.
No, and I understand that there already is billing software in place, okay? However, it's something that the town didn't get the vote on. It's an acquisition that I feel is an extreme cost and expense that is truly not acceptable to what we're being charged for this particular software. So, again, when we went back to-
I, I don't, I don't wanna get into a whole discussion of it, but I just wanna get what you wanna have done. You wanna buy, you wanna buy the new software-
Move forward with this software package, if in fact it can be installed and used remotely, so it interacts with the accounting software that's already in place at town hall.
And, and what, you would then say it's, the employee then is, remains as it is? Is that what you're sa, saying?
This is not a, we're not discussing-
I'm just asking what is most of it.
Yeah, I mean, since we're not really talking about an employee, we're just talking about associated hardware and software. You know, if, if it turns out to be Julie, yes, and of course it would remain Julie.
So you're just talking about where you're gonna have the employee sit? You're not talking about any other change?
That's correct.
All right, I'm just trying to get it, like, people understand what it is you wanna change. You'll have someone work out at light instead of working out at town hall?
That's correct.
That's the only change?
That's correct.
All right. Earl?
I also just, I also just wanted to clarify for the software that Bob was talking about. They do have software at the light and water depart, the light department. It's not compatible with the town software. This software package that we would get would have an annual cost of $3,300. Right now, we're charging annual cost of-
Can you, can you really pull it up to your mouth?
Right now, we're charging annual cost of $9,500 in the light department to you, for the software. The new software would be only $3,300, so it's a significant savings on a year-to-year basis, and the software would be compatible with what we have at the town software, so it wouldn't be a lot of data entry that would have to be done now.
Does anyone else wants to speak to this amendment? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I know we just voted not to tabling, but it sounds like there's a lot of confusion between both the selectmen and the commissioners. You now have a new light department manager, I don't know how involved he's been. I suggest that we sit back, take some time, educate people, so they know what they're voting on, because it's he said, she said, is what I'm hearing right now, so I don't know what the protocol is. We already voted not to table it, but I think we ought to be able to set up something, formal meetings, and then come back to this in another special meeting or something else.
Well, the, the difference between tabling or not tabling and what we're looking at now, tabling would just say, we just, we all agree that we're just gonna bring this up at some other time, or figure it out. If you vote, now you will have to make a vote. Either people can vote yes, we want this to happen, or they can say no, and the reason could be your reason, or it could be you just don't want it for some other reason.
Right, but I don't think people understand what they're voting for, is my, my point. And my suggestion would be, if you're gonna vote now, we vote it down on the safe side, why spend $34,000 on a system that you may not use in the future?
Well, I think people understand your point.
Okay. But I, I still suggest we should be able to table it if we wanna.
Well, I wanna see if there's anyone else new before I call back to, all right, Carol?
Just one more clarification, sorry. If you don't vote it tonight, just so you know, that you can't, it's out of retained earnings, it has to be used by June 30th, so you can't have it at the fall town meeting. That's why it's brought up now.
Yes.
Since the selectmen, I think, are probably most educated about what Bob's point is and what Linda's point is, can we have the three of you maybe explain your points of view, if you all agree, and just so we can have a better understanding of each other gentleman's point, that we don't, this is a very complicated issue?
Two of you have spoken, do you wanna-
Yeah, I'm not sure how much more clear I can be, just to what I've already said. I don't think there's any confusion, I don't think there's any confusion on our part. I think we're very clear on the fact that we think it'll save money for the water and sewer ratepayers. I think, maybe if, if I understand your question, Josh, is the question more about purchasing the software and potentially having the light department use that?
Yeah.
Then I, I would agree that that needs more conversation, because frankly, the question would be to the light commissioners that are here, would they be willing to utilize that software package? That, in my opinion, would take some additional conversation. I think that the motion unamended was, was pretty clear. I don't know what else I can possibly say about that. Does that clarify where I stand?
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're basically suggesting that we vote on the amendment as it stands and not as, as amended, and as amended, you're suggesting that I may not be the best force of action. If you're a part of the-
That's, that's my point, yes.
Laura?
If you look at the number B there, it, it simply says to purchase 50% of computer and software for a centralized utility building sys, billing system. It doesn't say where or anything else, it's generic. We've spent a lot of time, although they've spent more time than I have, as I've only been here for a year, trying to work with the water department to try and find a, a way to get some savings. I can honestly say there's, you know, no, nobody wants to see us lose a longtime employee, that's not the purpose behind this. For myself, using the light and water department has always been very, they've always been very helpful and very kind and very knowledgeable, so I wanted to say that upfront. If there is a way in which we can work with the new DPW person, light and water, rather, then certainly I, I agree, but to, you know, we've been trying to do that for a long time, and to come to town meeting and, and all of a sudden people say, well, we'll work with you, that- For myself, using the Light and Water Department has always been very, they've always been very helpful and very kind and very knowledgeable. So I wanted to just say that upfront. If there is a way in which we can work with the new DPW person, Light and Water, rather, then certainly I agree. But to, you know, we've been trying to do that for a long time. And to come to town meeting and all of a sudden people say, well, we'll work with you, that leaves me a little frustrated. Nobody has called me to speak to me regarding this. I'm always available. I feel that what we're trying to do is our due diligence in saving money. And if it is possible, we don't have the same relationship that we have with the library. I'm wearing two hats here. The Senior Center, I'm answerable to the selectmen. The Highway Department is answerable to the selectmen. But the Light and Water is responsible, their commissioners make the decisions in a different way than just coming here and having a say. So we have to find ways to communicate better with the commissioners. And I'm hoping that we will be able to do that. But that's where I'm coming from, is trying to find a way in which we can work together and save money.
Sure.
Yeah. The only thing I'll say is that, you know, we've made numerous attempts in sitting down with the commissioners and the former Light Department manager and going over these charges time and time and time again. And to no avail. To Earl's and Carol's point earlier, it's always been kind of a take it or leave it attitude. And we spend a lot of time as selectmen every other week going over all the warrants for payroll and expenses. It typically takes anywheres from 30 to 40 minutes, you know, twice a week, to go over them thoroughly. I can't tell you personally how many notes I've sent back to the Light Commissioners and the Light Department Managers, Light Department Manager, suggesting they consider a different way of doing business. And I'll give you one example. In Town Hall, any anticipated expense in excess of $500, we require the department had to get three bids and fill out a form. When this was suggested to the Light Department Manager and Commissioners, they said they were gonna follow state law, and it was gonna be $5,000. Okay. Well, not too long ago, we signed warrants for some tree work, anticipated tree work that they need to hire a contractor or contractors to come in. And I assume it's to clear tree limbs away from our power lines, which I think we all agree is something that should be done because we'd have less outages during a storm. The combined total was $17,000. There was no three bids. When I sent a note back to the Commissioners and the Light Department Manager asking, you know, why, since this was clearly in excess of $5,000, why that hadn't been done, my request for information was ignored. This is the, so there's not been, in my mind's eye, any lack of communication from the Board of Selectmen to the Light Department Manager or the Commissioners. I think we've made it quite clear that, you know, we're interested in working together and taking a look at these expenses so that it's beneficial for everybody. The, you know, not only the light, the ratepayers for the Light Department, but water and sewer as well. We've made every effort in order to make this happen and been rebuffed at every single turn. So I, you know, I like some of what I'm hearing. I think it's a little too late, maybe not, hopefully, you know, that an olive branch is being extended. There's a, the door is always open for communication. But I hope you're getting a sense for why we're here now and having looked at this as an alternative. And by the way, a few years ago, when we sat here and we made the pitch to purchase this new accounting software system, it was made quite clear that there were other modules that were available for different types of billing that go on, you know, light, water, sewer, tax. And that we were going, once we got the system up and running, got all the bugs worked out of it, we were gonna start looking at some of these other modules and the cost effectiveness of bringing, you know, of bringing them online. So this isn't really anything new that surprised the Commissioners. It may have surprised the new Light Department Manager, since he's only been onboard for a short period of time. And maybe there's some lack of communication there between him and his Commissioners. But not from the Board of Selectmen in that department whatsoever.
Very well. Yes, sir? Can you come by the mic?
Good evening. My name is Francisco Frias. I'm the new general manager of the Light Department. And one thing that I'd like to bring to the whole committee is the fact that I've been with the Light Department for about over three months. And except for the last week or the week before was the first time that I was approached by Carol and Mr. Bob Sinnebaldi about this issue. I think there is extremely a lack of communication. As the Light Department Manager, I think there are ways that we can save money. And I open to hear any options available to save money. Because it's not saving money to the Light Department, to the town. So I think the fact that we haven't been able to communicate the last three or almost four months, it is something that needs to be addressed and something that needs to be considered. Having to change a software system, believe me, I, my background is engineering, and I know it takes a lot, a lot of work. I think the fact that there is employment on the line for the fact that something that hasn't been communicated, something that needs to be considered by the whole town, and again, it's not a saving to the Light Department, it's a saving to the whole town. I mean, if we move forward and we buy a piece of software that has limited, probably limited capability, I'm not aware, I mean, I have no idea what this software is. I don't know the manufacturer. I don't know what it does. I know what our software does. So the fact that we haven't been able to communicate and I haven't been approached even through this process is something that indicates that the town needs better communication. I mean, I come from the town of Wellesley. And the communication between departments seems to be a little better. So the fact that we can, if we move forward, I mean, I'm here to save money to the town. I want the best for the town. I'm looking forward to working and saving money so the town residents can get those benefits. And I think the town, if we move forward with this amendment, I think it's something, or this article, excuse me, I think it's something that is gonna end up resulting in savings that are not gonna be reached because of the fact that the departments have not been able to work together. From what I have in that meeting with Bob and Carol, they are really pleased with the department and the staff, what we do for them. It's just items that they believe can be reduced, or expenses that can be reduced. Again, I'm open to sit with the DPW and any other department to find ways to reduce money. But I think if we move forward without having those discussions, there are gonna be consequences that are not necessary, especially to our staff. I mean, we recently finished a union contract for the next three years, taking into considerations the fact that we have, we are a staff, four people to take responsibilities on the DPW side and also the Light Department. So a matter like this is something that needs communication. I mean, the fact that we, I mean, that the town is moving, wants to move forward and fast on this without the proper communication is something that I wouldn't agree. And again, I think it's a bad, I mean, the wrong step if we were to move forward that way. Again, I'm open, as the new general manager, I'm open to talk to any other department about any way to save money and bring the benefits to the town. I don't think this should be the DPW and Light Department. This should be the town of Marymount. I mean, so we're gonna get those savings if we are able to work together and find those different areas that we can save. Again, thank you for your time, and any questions, I'm open to answer those.
Earl?
So am I hearing from you, Fernando, as well as from...
Francisco.
Sorry, Francisco, pardon me, and Commissioner Young. Am I hearing a commitment on your part to work with the Board of Selectmen, the DPW Director, to reduce the cost that you're charging the ratepayers for the water and the sewer processing?
Just today, I shared an email with Carol and Bob, trying to set up a meeting so we can get together and go over those costs. Again, we are open to cost savings. I mean, there are no reasons why, if we are presented with options on different areas on how to reduce costs, I mean, that, it doesn't make sense for us to say, no, let's keep it that way. We want to spend more money on this way that we do things. If we are able to come to an agreement that makes sense to the Light Department and the Water Department, the DPW, we are gonna be looking into ways to reduce those costs. But the fact that, again, in the last three, three and a half months, I haven't been approached about what's been taking place is something that I think we need to improve our channels of communication. So again, I'm open to sit with the DPW, with any other, with the Board of Selectmen, and see what options we have. Because at the end, we're gonna end up winning if we work together. I don't think it should be the DPW trying to find a way to save. And again, if you guys have ways, or if you have focus on areas that you think that we can save money, I mean, it'd be something, something that the town, I mean, that the DP, I mean, the Light Department should be aware of so we can pass those benefits to the ratepayers. You know, I don't see the water and sewer ratepayers and the Light Department ratepayers. I see the town of Marymount, ratepayers wants to get the best, wants to get the best service, want to get the benefit. So if we work together, we're gonna be able to accomplish that, instead of working separate.
All right. Thank you.
So in the room, we have one commissioner, and we have one member on the ballot that most likely will be on the Board of Light Commissioners. So I respect everything that you've had to say. But as far as more discussion without a commitment to try as best as possible to reverse some of these fees, that's all it's gonna be, is a discussion which we've had dozens of times over the last five years. So what I'd like to see, because I think, you know, you're very sincere, and I think you're right, you've got a good grasp on it. You're either taking the money out of the ratepayers' pocket or the taxpayer's pocket. But at the end of the day, we're trying to make it a little bit more financially feasible and palatable for those, for those ratepayers. So does our existing commissioner and our soon-to-be new commissioner today be willing to commit to some serious discussion? Not about the numbers and we just look at them and move them around the page, and at the end of the day, we've not accomplished anything? But some serious discussion about being able to take a look at these and how we can partner and work together in an ability to help you be able to reduce some of your costs that are being charged out on our side?
Again.
I'd like the commitment, I'd like the answer to come from the Commissioners, please.
I 100% agree and promise to do that.
Fantastic. Then I'll be the first to go ahead and make another motion to table this.
I will second that.
All right. I hate to let procedures stand in the way of a good idea. So why don't we bring the motion to table to a vote that will take care of item B for this meeting? All in favor of tabling item B? All opposed? All right, it is unanimously decided to table it. It is off the agenda for the meeting.
Thank you, and I look forward to working with the three of you.
As do I.
Article four.
All right. Mr. Moderator. I move to see if the town will vote to appropriate from water retained earnings a sum of money in the amount of $185,000 for the following specific purposes outlined below, or take any other action relative thereto.
You can leave D off, if you...
Okay. Don't we have to table that?
You don't have to make a motion for D.
So it'll be, should I read that again? $168,000?
$168,000?
Yep. I move that the town vote to appropriate from the water retained earnings a sum of money in the amount of $168,000 for the following specific purposes. A, $120,000 to make necessary upgrades to sections of the town's water mains. B, $38,000 to purchase a four-by-four utility pickup truck with plow for the DPW Department Water Division. And C, $10,000 to request additional funds for the repair or replacement of the roof at the water treatment plant.
Second.
All right, on Article four, it's removed to take from the water retained earnings. The other one was from the waste water retained earnings. $168,000. $120,000 for upgrades to the mains. $38,000 for another pickup, and $10,000 for repair of the roof. Any questions or discussion on those three? All right, seeing none, we'll bring this to a vote. All in favor? All opposed? It is approved unanimously. We have completed the work for the special town meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the special town meeting? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, the special town meeting is adjourned. That brings us to the annual town meeting. And while usually we move through this in the order that things are in the warrant, I believe there's a request to bring forward and start with Article 12. There was a special handout about Article 12. Looks like this. It has a blank black line across the middle and says Peregrine.
So we've asked to take this article first. Steve Wiseman from Peregrine is, Energy has been working with us in making sure that we are doing the right thing in spending a million dollars to get back a million dollars in savings over a period of time. Unfortunately, he was only able to be at our meeting tonight, would not be able to be here where we would normally take this up at the continuation on the 13th. So we've asked to take this out of order so that Mr. Wiseman could answer any questions that anyone might have regarding the expenditure of the million-plus dollars towards the energy savings that have been proposed.
So to take it up out of order, it takes a two-thirds vote. All in favor of taking it up at first? All opposed? It is approved unanimously. We'll take it up, Article 12.
Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote that $1,021,853 is appropriated for the purpose of making energy-efficient improvements to town buildings, including the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow $1,021,853 under General Law Chapter 44, Section 7, 3B, or any other enabling authority, or to enter into a lease purchase financing agreement with respect to such project with a principal amount not to exceed $1,021,853, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into an energy services contract, ESCO, with Amoresco or any other appropriate company relating to the project. Provided, however, that the appropriation and borrowing authority or lease purchase financing authority under this vote shall not be effective until the Board of Selectmen approves an intermunicipal agreement between the town and the Penn Tucket Regional School District, pursuant to which the town may carry out the portion of the project in borrowing authorized hereunder in district school buildings located in the town, and pursuant to which the energy saving costs, savings achieved in such school buildings as a result of the project shall offset debt service incurred by the town for the project. And that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out the project.
Did you have someone who would like to present, or just open the discussion?
Does he have a present, is he gonna speak? Do you have, do you wanna... Yes, Mr. Wiseman, would you mind?
All right. I'm gonna ask the town meeting to approve a hearing from Stephen Wiseman, who's the vice president of Peregrine Energy Group. You want to come to the mic here? Well, you can stand by... Well, you can stand by the mic so everybody will see who we're talking about. All in favor of his speaking to us, although he's not a registered voter in town? All opposed? Please, sir, enlighten us.
You're welcome.
So, I'm going to be speaking to this handout that the finance director has prepared, we have copies of it. I really only want to...
You're going to have to really...
Yes, yes, I understand.
Come to the mic, all right.
I'm only going to speak to the high points and provide a brief summary of this presentation, but the goal here is twofold. It is infrastructure renewal and energy efficiency. And through this program, which my firm Peregrine Energy has been working with the town on for the last nine months, they would enter into a contract with Amaresco, which is an energy services company based in Framingham that was selected through a competitive process by the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission to provide this service to communities throughout the Merrimack Valley region. The principle behind performance contracting is that a single contract is used for multiple improvements in multiple buildings. The savings are required by law to cover the full cost of the investment. So in this case, we're talking about energy savings. The project of one, just over $1 million would be repaid through energy savings equal to approximately $105,000 a year. Those energy savings would be realized in both school buildings and town buildings. If you look at this document, you'll see a list of the specific improvements that are going to be made, infrastructure improvements. Now, the magic of performance contracting, which everybody always says is too good to believe, is that this million dollars' worth of capital improvements to town and school buildings will not require any increase to your tax rate. The savings will come out of your operating budget every year, and those operating budget savings will be used to make lease payments. Discussions have been had already with Bank of America. Bank of America has put together a proposal for a lease. I believe the lease rate is 2.37%. The term of the lease would be 11 years. The project would be cash flow positive each and every year. And again, if the savings do not meet the required lease payment amount, Amaresco is required by law to make up the difference, to keep the town whole. So that's the basic principle behind performance contracting. This is not something that is only being done in Merrimack. It is being done all across the Commonwealth. It's being done in state buildings, it's being done public housing authorities, regional schools, and many, many cities and towns.
Thank you.
Just to add something to this, this similar presentation, maybe just a little bit more expanded on, was given to the school committee, and you may have read it in the paper, that after that, not only did the school committee adopt this unanimously, but see it as a model that should be used throughout the district in West Newbury and Groveland as well. So it's, you know, we're kind of on the cutting edge of this, and we've put the right people in place, and it's a model that it looks like our sister towns will be following as well.
And I would be happy to answer any questions if people have them.
Yes, sir.
Robert, I was just wondering, what's the life cycle of the equipment that you supply to the town and decommissioning? What's the life cycle?
Can you just repeat the question? You don't need to repeat it, Robert.
Yeah, the question was, what's the life cycle of the equipment that's going to be installed? I should be clear that we are not installing the equipment. We are the town's owners' representative in this process and will be representing the town during the construction period, assisting with overseeing construction, verifying the savings, and ensuring that the equipment is properly commissioned, meaning that it operates properly and according to design. But the equipment that we're talking about will undoubtedly last for longer than the period of time of the equipment lease, and it will generate the savings that have been promised for that entire period of time.
Yes.
Would that include decommissioning of the equipment's intended life cycle? That savings would also cover that cost?
I'm not exactly sure what we're talking about with decommissioning, but for most of this equipment, after the equipment is installed, it belongs to the town or to the school district like any other equipment does. So from that perspective, it's no different than any other purchase that you would make, and your obligation would certainly be to operate and maintain the equipment, which you would want to do anyway in a proper fashion, replacing belts, et cetera, et cetera. At the end of the equipment life, and again, this is equipment that replaces old and outdated equipment that you have already, so I don't really view there as being any decommissioning required, per se.
Okay.
All right. Yeah. All right. If you got your answer, we'll leave it at that.
I'll be off.
Any, anyone else have anything to say? Well, thank you, Mr. Wiseman.
You're welcome. Thank you.
The proviso about working out a deal yet with Penn Tucket, do you want to say anything about what that means?
Well, the town owns the building, but the school district leases them from us. They pay the utility bills, but it's, you know, the town is entering into this agreement to be able to replace some of the outdated equipment that's in the building, so an agreement needed to be worked out with the district office, and maybe the business manager might be able to speak a little bit more intelligently on this than I can if it's all right for him to come forward.
If it's only a little bit more intelligent.
Yeah. No, probably a lot.
We give permission to the business manager to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to answer Rick's question, the district has agreed unanimously to enter into an MOU, which is a memorandum of understanding with the town, and what that MOU will state is that the savings that the district receives from these energy upgrades, we will then use that money to pay back the town for this debt service. Does that answer the question, Rick?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't mess up the answer.
All right. Well, then, if we want, if we have no other questions, we'll bring article 12 to a vote. Because of the financing arrangement, this requires a two-thirds vote for approval. All in favor? All opposed? There being none opposed, it is unanimous and approved. Well, for those of you who are following along, we'll go back now to article number one, the omnibus article, and I'll call upon the finance committee to come forward. The line items of article one are in the finance committee report. Midway through, it's captioned Article One, Finance, Financial Year 2014, Omnibus Budget. Yeah, they will, but before they go, this is Patty Dillon, who is the new chair of the finance committee, and did you have something? Does the finance committee have a general view of the budget situation this year, or you want to just go right ahead?
Is this... Better? Is that all?
Yeah.
Okay. The finance committee's letter summarizes the position of the town. I am going to, when it's turned over to me to read the omnibus budget for consideration by town meeting, I'm going to be reading the fifth column in the omnibus, which starts on about page five of this, and the one thing I would like to bring to your attention, the fifth column is the FY 2014 Finance Committee Budget Recommendations, and I'm really pleased to say that the finance committee, we're brought at the beginning of the season, the financial season, we're brought from the town departments their budget requests, and really pleased this year that we're able to recommend to the voters of town meeting to meet the departmental requests this year across the board. So you'll see, column four and column five are actually identical. I think this is the first time in a very long time that we've been totally in line with what the departments are requesting, and I think it's in part because of the great job that the departments have been doing over the past few years to keep the expenses down, and so the town is actually, the finances of the town are in very good shape.
Thank you, Pat. Who is article one?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to fix the salary and compensation of all elective officers of the town as provided by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 108, as amended. Town clerk, three assessors, three commissioners of municipal light, and raise, appropriate, or transfer sums of money therefore, and to determine sums of money raised to be transferred to defray the necessary and usual charges and expenses of the town for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2012, and make appropriations for the same... Excuse me, 20...
2014. Commences 2013.
It's a typo. And make appropriations for the same said sums of money so raised, appropriated, or transferred to be expended for specific purposes to be voted, and that $12,232,612 be raised as follows. Raise and appropriate $12,227,612. Transfer from WPAT receipts reserved $5,000.
Second. Thank you. Folks, if you've opened up to the, in the finance committee report, to the four pages of line items, first one being the group called Maturing Debt, it's been our practice to ask the finance committee to go sort of section by section, lines one to five, six to 10, and if you have, if you want, after she reads that total, if you want to discuss any of the lines that have just been raised, then just raise your hand and say, "Hold", and we will, before we go forward to the next section, we will discuss those items. Once we've gone through a section, though, we're going to keep going until we get to the end and vote the entire budget, with the exception of the school budgets, we have to vote those separately. Clear? Good. Patty?
Okay, great. And so again, I'm reading column number, the fifth column, that says FY 2004 Finance Committee Budget. Those are our recommendations. Maturing Debt, lines one through five, a total of $494,629.
Any questions? I will go on to the six to 10. Yes, sir.
I just have one question on that, because first of all, when the finance committee was through the budget, did that mean that they took up the budget in under 1%? The majority of that seems to be in this category. If I didn't reduce the debt by $100, $108,000, return debt.
I'm actually going to ask the finance director to answer. She can be a little more specific. It's just that the debt is not, it's done being paid, so as we're reducing the debt, it comes off the debt service.
Okay. I read the script, and FY 2004, I assume that that would come into the job.
Yes, but there's some, that's when the final debt is due, is done, but there's certain projects within that that come off each year, so each year, some comes off.
All right, this is paying the principal down on various things. The interest is pretty steady, but the principal can really change. Are there any other questions about paying off the principal on maturing debt? All right, we'll move on to the interest payments on the same.
Interest on maturing debt, lines six through 10, $143,014.
Any questions on the interest? All right, unclassified?
Unclassified, lines 11 through 23, total of $956,071.
Any questions on lines 11 to 23?
General Government, on the next page, lines 24 through 53, total of $565,996.
These are basically all your offices and expenses. Any questions? Turn the page.
This next section I'm going to take by departments, so I'm going to be reading the subtotal lines. So first, under Public Safety, lines 54 and 55, subtotal for the Police Department, $916,945.
Okay, next.
Subtotal for the Fire Department, lines 56 through 59, $598,000.
Four hundred...
I'm sorry.
Any questions about that? You just saved $100,000.
It's been a long day. Okay, then the final subtotal under Public Safety, line 60 through 68, Other Public Safety,
Any questions?
Okay, then we'll move on to Health and Sanitation, rows 69 through 74, for a total Health and Sanitation of 901,464.
All right, Highway?
Highway Department, lines 75 through 78, for a total of $594,270.
All right, turn the page.
Moving on to the next page, again, I'll take these items by subcategory. First, under Public Assistance, the subtotal for the Council of Aging, rows 79 through 82, a total of $230,700.
See no questions? Next.
Subtotal for Veteran Services, rows 83 through 84, a total of $54,952, subtotal of Veteran Services.
All right, we're going to reach Public Education. We'll do these separately and take votes.
So do you want me to skip over reading them?
No, we'll just...
We'll just take...
Yeah, tell us specifically the lines. Line 95 is for what, and 86 is for what?
So Public Education, the first subtotal for the Whittier Assessment, rows 85 and 86. The total for Whittier, $607,836.
Okay, do we have, we have someone here from Whittier tonight? Paul?
We have, yes.
Yes, I know. Does anyone have any questions for Whittier as to their, the assessment from Whittier? If not, then we'll bring the Whittier Assessment, the total for a vote, that's $607,836. We're one of the 13 or so cities and towns that participate in the Whittier?
Eleven.
Eleven. Well, we're one of 13. Eleven. So this is like, like Penn Tucket, we all vote our own assessments. All in favor of the assessment from Whittier, $607,836. All opposed, that the assessment is approved unanimously. Go on to Penn... Go on to Penn Tucket.
The next subtotal, under Public Education, row eighty-seven and eighty-eight, Penn Tucket Regional, six million, six hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
You have someone from Penn Tucket here? Any questions for Penn Tucket? Yes, sir.
I'm the school chair.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
I just want to commend our Finance Director and our Superintendent on bringing in our budget. I think this is probably one of the first years I've known that we haven't tried to override our budget by 239 percent.
People have any questions about, as they say, how they did it? Maybe some things are better not asked. All in favor, then, of the Penn Tucket assessment, six million, six hundred sixty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. All opposed, it is approved unanimously.
Okay, moving on to Library, rows eighty-nine and ninety, a total of two hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars.
Any questions? All right.
Cemetery, rows ninety-one and ninety-two, for a total of forty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars.
All right, then we'll...
And that brings us...
We'll bring it all to a vote, then.
Can I make a motion, corrections to motion? The number was wrong.
Which number?
That we read.
Well, we read a whole bunch of numbers.
No, no, the total number.
Oh, okay.
Can I have the correct numbers?
The motion should be that twelve million, two forty-three, three eighty-two be raised, and raise and appropriate twelve million, two thirty-eight, three eighty-two, and transfer from WPAT receipts reserved, five thousand.
All right, so the total, let me make it straight, and we'll get this voted out. The total that's in the Finance Committee Report is the correct total. That's what you wanted to make. Twelve million, two forty-three, three eighty-two, not two thirty-two, something, something, something. All right. And the five thousand is, all right. All right, folks, the amount that's printed in the Finance Committee book is the actual total of what we just went through. Twelve million, two hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars. And what Mr. Baumgartner read and caught some mistake in of the date, the amount in that motion was that we raise and appropriate twelve million, two thirty-two, six twelve, including five thousand dollars from WPAT receipts reserved. Can we all agree to amend what Mr. Baumgartner read, so the motion actually reads the real total? All in favor of the amendment? All opposed? All right, this is the figure. So then, we're going to bring the total of the omnibus to a vote. The total is as printed on the Finance Committee Report, except five thousand dollars of that is raised, is a transfer from WPAT receipts reserved. All in favor of the motion as brought by the Finance Committee? All opposed? The omnibus budget is adopted as presented.
Before I turn back the mic, I just want to make a plea. For Finance Committee, we need members. It's not a major time commitment. It's about for three months of the year, January through March, actually, February through April. We meet with town departments to go over their budgets and learn about the town finances, to bring forward to you what we feel is fiscally responsible for the town. And we have lost a couple members because of moving out of town, resigning, et cetera, and so we are going to be short next year. So if anyone's interested in joining the Finance Committee, the moderator, Bob Bender, see him, and he actually appoints the members. So please, if you want to get involved with the town finances, that would be awesome. Thanks.
And if you're not here in the room to talk to me tonight, you can, or you don't want to talk to me tonight, you can call me, four five two nine, in Merrimack. It's in the town, listed as the number as the town moderator, but it's me. I really want to urge people, you know, over the years that I've been moderator, we have a lot of people who've been, moved into the Finance Committee. It isn't as, it isn't quite as simple as doing your budget at home, but it's really, if you're comfortable with thinking in terms of budgets, you know, how much money do I have? How much money can I spend? Why do people need to spend it on this and that? The Finance Committee really works well together. They get a lot of information from the town departments and from Carol McLeod, the Finance Director, and the Selectmen. It's really a way to find out how your money is being used in town and helps out the rest of town quite a bit by be able to, you put in some time, and it saves time, a lot of time, at town meeting, as far as understanding what's going on. So I can't think of really too many things that you could be willing to do that would help us out more. Well, I could, but I want to single out the Finance Committee tonight for that attention. So please, give it a try. You learn, you don't have to know everything the first day you're there. And some people enjoy it so much, they've stayed for years and years and years. And I hope you will come and see me. Article Two.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, a sum of money to operate the wastewater department enterprise. Salaries, three hundred thirty-five thousand, eight hundred forty-nine dollars. Expenses, five hundred twenty-one thousand, one hundred thirty-eight dollars. Debt service, two hundred fifty-six thousand, nine hundred seventy dollars, totaling one million, one hundred thirteen thousand, nine hundred fifty-seven dollars. And that one million, one hundred thirteen thousand, nine hundred fifty-seven dollars be raised as follows. Department receipts, one million, sixty-three thousand, nine hundred fifty-seven, five, nine hundred fifty-seven dollars. Wastewater Betterment Fund, fifty thousand dollars.
Second. It's moved and seconded to raise money for the operation of the wastewater department, from, mostly from the wastewater department's receipts, ratepayers. Are there any questions or discussion about this motion? All in favor of the motion on Article Two? All opposed? It is adopted unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money to operate the Water Department Enterprise. Salaries, two hundred eighty-one thousand, one hundred twenty-six dollars. Expenses, four hundred three thousand, six hundred eighty-six dollars. Debt service, three hundred seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Total, nine hundred ninety-two thousand, three hundred twelve dollars. And that nine hundred ninety-two thousand, three hundred twelve dollars be raised as follows. Departmental receipts, nine hundred ninety-two thousand, three hundred twelve dollars.
Second. Moved and seconded as to the budget, the budget of the Water Department, raise some of the ratepayers. Any questions or discussion? And all in favor of the motion on Article Three? All opposed? It is adopted unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from available funds, a sum of money in the amount of ten thousand dollars from the electric light operating balance, said money to be used by the assessors to reduce the tax rate for fiscal year 2014.
Second. Moved and seconded to take ten thousand dollars from the electric light operating balance. All in favor? All opposed? It's adopted unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of ten thousand, seven hundred forty dollars to be expended by the Board of Assessors to hire a consultant to perform an independent revaluation.
Second. Moved and seconded to raise ten thousand, seven hundred forty dollars for the Board of Assessors to do their independent revaluation. All in favor? All opposed? It is unanimous.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from available funds, known as sale of cemetery lots, a sum of money in the amount of six thousand, two hundred dollars to be expended under the direction of the cemetery trustees for the care, improvement, and embellishment of said cemeteries in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 114, Section 15, and Section 25.
Second. Moved and seconded to appropriate money for the sale of cemetery lots. Any questions? All in favor? All opposed? It's adopted unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the state grant of Chapter 90 Highway Funds and authorize the Board of Selectmen to expend said funds for highway purposes in accordance with the terms of said grants.
Second. Moved and seconded that we accept Chapter 90 money from the state. All in favor? All opposed? It's adopted unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, a sum of money in the amount of one hundred eighty-five thousand dollars for solid waste collection and disposal, recycling collection, and leaf collection, and that one hundred eighty-five thousand dollars to be raised as follows. Raise and appropriate, ninety thousand dollars. Transfer from trash offset receipts, ninety-five thousand dollars.
Second. Moved and seconded that we raise one hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, or tran, and transfer from trash offset receipts, ninety-five thousand of that. Any questions or discussion? All in favor of the motion on Article Eight? All opposed? It's adopted unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Paragraph 53E, one-half, to establish revolving funds for the departments for the specific purpose outlined above for the fiscal year 2014.
Second. All right, as to Article Nine, you have in the reports, items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, no K. These are the annual revolving funds that we have to approve each year. I don't think any on the list have changed from last year. Is that correct?
No, it's the same list.
Anyone have any questions about any of these particular revolving funds? All right, see, none will put the whole package up for a vote. Does someone have a question? They'll put the whole package up for a vote. We approve operating, establishing and operating these revolving funds for each of the departments as outlined in Paragraphe's A through J. All in favor? All opposed? They are approved unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of eighty thousand dollars for additional closure activities at the Battis Road landfill.
Second. Moved and seconded that we raise and appropriate eighty thousand dollars for additional work for closing the Battis Road landfill. Have any questions or discussion about that? I think there were some handouts outside about Battis Road and what's going on out there. All in favor of the motion to appropriate eighty thousand dollars? All opposed? It's adopted unanimously. All right, is that it? Yes, I have.
We're getting closer. I don't know if you've been down there or not, but boy, does it look good. I mean, for an old landfill. And it's high. Yeah, exactly. I'll let Carol speak to the actual timeframe, but I think we're getting very close.
They're actually hoping within two years, we'll be able to get the final closure on it. And then we'll just have to do the annual maintenance, but that's it. So hopefully, we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel.
We're not putting a tunnel in, Carol, okay? All right, before you start, I just want to note for the record, those of you who didn't join us for Candidates Night, and haven't seen it on the, on the film, the Merrimack Station, probably have missed that this is Earl Baumgartner's last night, and he's just read his last motion for the Board of Selectmen. Those of you who have become accustomed to his face will have to visit him at home.
I'll be there much more often.
We want to thank you, Earl, for your many years of service to the Board of Selectmen and other boards that also do very important work, including the School Committee and Planning Board.
Here, here.
So, on with the show, as Earl would say.
Article 11. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to, I don't know, I don't think this is, I move that the town vote to that the town votes.
All right, just start. I move that the town votes.
To approve amendment passed on March 5th, 2013, to the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar borrowing authorized by vote of the Penn Tucket Regional School District School Committee on April 3rd, 2012, for the purpose of paying costs of replacement of kitchen equipment and related renovation to the district's Helena Donahue Elementary School in Merrimack, Massachusetts, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, and quotes the Donahue Project, which amended provides that due to the extent any balance of the appropriation remains after completion of the Donahue Project, such amount shall be applied to the remediation of flooring at the district's Dr. Frederick and Sweets Elementary School in Merrimack, Massachusetts, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. The Sweets Project, and the town acknowledges that pursuant to the district agreement, all costs of the Donahue and Sweets Projects, including the debt service on the bonds or notes issued by the district to finance the Donahue and Sweets Projects, shall be allocable solely to the town of Merrimack.
Second.
All right, so moved and seconded that we approve an amendment to borrowing that was done regarding the Donahue Project and the Sweets Project, and the Penn Tucket School Committee has already approved an amendment concerning the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars borrowed. Are there any questions about this? You want to explain?
Well, yeah, just to clarify, the kitchen is still getting done. It's just come under, way, way under budget. Again, with the assistance of our new business manager, we've been able to accomplish all the goals for a lot less money. So we still have some other projects within this, this school that need to be addressed, so why not use the money we've already allocated and just switch, you know, just switch it over so that we can get some of those projects done here as well? More bang for our buck than what we originally anticipated.
So we're changing the purpose of the borrowing, add, add to the task list of what can get paid for without borrowing more?
Correct.
All right. All in favor of getting more for your money? All opposed? It is unanimous.
Article 13. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the care, custody, management, and control of the real property described in this article from the Board of Selectmen for the purpose, for the purpose for which the property is now held to the Board of Selectmen, for the purpose of conveyance and will authorize the Selectmen to convey pursuant to the requirements of General Laws, Chapter 30B, Section 16, parcel of surplus land with any buildings thereon containing about point two-two-eight acres located at 28 School Street, shown on Assessors Map 13, Block 1, as Lot 18, on such terms and conditions and for which, and for such sum of money as the Selectmen may determine.
Second.
All right, for those of you who may have walked in late, we're on Article 13. We did Article 12 first, so we can jump ahead to Article 13. It's been moved and seconded that we transfer the property at 28 School Street, which, as our rationale says, was the old senior center or the even older firehouse, 28 School Street, the corner of School Street and Lancaster Court, on such terms as the Selectmen may be able to arrange. Are there any questions about this? Yes, sir.
I'll be quick. The moderator pointed out that it is the old fire department. It is a building that predates Merrimack. It is the oldest historic building that the town of Merrimack owns presently, and it has a lot of significance to the town and is being used presently by the veterans and the, the... the museum for storage of some equipment, artifacts, and so forth. They're going to be displaced if we do this, for one, but more importantly, the building is our building. It does need repair. I don't agree, as, just looking at the building, that it needs $600,000 worth of work, and there are a group of people that are interested in exploring funds and means to make the repairs and manage the building long-term, hopefully at no cost. We wouldn't be coming back to the town. There is a group, I submitted a letter to the Selectmen tonight, of interested parties from the, I'm sorry, not the library, the fire department, from the historical group, and from the veterans. We'd like to have an opportunity to look at the property, have it looked at privately, and see what it would take for that group to come together and save the property instead of having it go away, and has a lot of significance, like I said, to the town historically. So it was built in, I believe, 1871, and it has served us well for a long, long time. It does need work, there's no question about it.
Yes.
Just to go along with Larry, he and I have had a lot of discussion about this, but the rationale between the Board of Selectmen was not just to get rid of the building. We were trying to come up with a way of being able to save it. Many of you may know the old Grange Hall, going back to my days on the planning board with Earl. Somebody had come forward, purchased that property, renovated it, turned it into, I think there's three residential condominiums in there, so now we not only saved an historic structure in town, but we turned it back to some useful purpose. We were thinking along the same lines with this particular structure. We were going to craft a request for proposals, an RFP, with some very specific terms in which we would try to solicit some people to come forward with an attempt to be able to save the historic section of the building, you know, get it renovated, and turn it back into a useful structure in town again. Larry has put together a group of individuals that would like to take this project on and search out historical, grants for historical buildings. The, you know, this building has sat, you know, with very limited use and absolutely no money given to it, you know, for better than 10 years. So this is a good way, I mean, I think we're simpatico here as to, you know, what the ultimate goal is, is to save the historic structure, because if we don't do anything, it's just going to continue to deteriorate to the point where it can't be saved. So, you know, personally, I'm definitely in favor of what Larry's group wants to do. They want to try to do this with 100% grant money, because the town, quite frankly, we just don't have the money in our budget to be able to put into it. And I, you know, would be in favor of giving them the time necessary to be able to start pursuing the various avenues for, you know, historic status and grant opportunities, and then be able to come back to town meeting and let us know what they've been able to put together.
Yes, sir.
I move to table Article 13.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, and I think you understand why, that we tabled this article, not take any action at this time on it. People have any questions about tabling or the discussion? All in favor of tabling Article 13? All opposed? It is unanimously tabled.
Article 14, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the official Merrimack zoning map by extending the Lake Aditash District to now include but not limited to the following: Bissen Lane, Aditash Avenue, Shore Road, Colin?
Colgan.
Colgan, sorry, Road. These new reading glasses aren't working. Alnet Road, Greystone Road, and the northeasterly side of West Shore Road as far as Colgan Road.
Second.
All right, we have a whole series of zoning bylaw changes coming up here, and the situation is the same for all. It takes a two-thirds vote to approve them, but really, not going to accept any amendments to them, so unless you have any questions about what they are, it's really an up or down vote. Any people have any questions as to this, extending the Lake Aditash District to include the roads that were listed? All in favor, then? All opposed? It is adopted unanimously.
Article 15, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the Merrimack zoning bylaw, Article 8, Village Center District, Section 8.3, uses and structures permitted by special permit, subsection 8.3.1 to read, "New construction of multifamily dwellings restricted for occupancy by persons over 55 and persons with disabilities with up to nine dwelling units on a conforming lot."
Second.
Does anyone have any questions about this? All right, then, on the motion on Article 15, amending subsection 8.3.1, all in favor? All opposed? It is adopted unanimously.
Article 16, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the Merrimack zoning bylaw, Article 23, Supplemental Regulations, Section 23.7, Earth Removal, subsection 23.7.1, Stripping of Topsoil, Item 23.7.1.2.1, by removing the following, accompanied by a non-refundable fee of $150, and replacing with accompanied by a non-refundable fee, and in subsection 23.7.2, excavation of clay, sand, gravel, or rock, Item 23.7.2.2.1, by removing the following, accompanied by a non-refundable fee of $150, and replace with accompanied by a non-refundable fee.
Second.
All right, yes, the motion, this Article 16, is to remove the specific fee amount from the non-refundable fee. Ed?
What's the plot behind this? It sounds like they don't want a small fee. It sounds like they want to be, like they know only the things they want to make the cost of themselves to want to be in this court.
Well, the language, the language as it's rewritten, Ed, would say that instead of having to come to town meeting to change the fee from $150, the town will be able to set the fee case by case.
Yeah.
That's the intent, so you got it right.
I understand that, but what are we talking about? Such a fee set so high that it'd be ridiculous for anybody to come forward and want to do this work?
Well, I can ask someone from the planning board. I see Sandy Venter is here.
Hello, I'm Sandy Venter. I'm Chair of the Planning Board, and the reason we brought this forward is, well, if you want a little history, if you remember, we had kind of lost our earth removal bylaw because it kind of got, well, and the redoing of the zoning bylaws, it just kind of got dropped entirely, and then we put it back in to ensure that we had this covered, but when we put it back in, we did put it in with a set fee amount, and we really hadn't thought through that very well, and the fact that with other fees, we don't specify a set fee amount in the zoning bylaw, and the reason you don't do that is because to change zoning bylaws, like the ones you see today, you have to advertise that twice in a newspaper of general distribution, that you're holding a public hearing on this, have that public hearing, and then come to town meeting to have a vote at town meeting. So if we would want to raise this fee by $10, we would have to go through that process to be able to raise the fee, and that's why you don't see fees for anything else that come underneath building-related things in the zoning bylaws themselves, so you don't have to go through all that procedure. That costs you far more than that $10 you might want to raise the fee, so you can raise fees. So it's not with any specific intent to raise it in the near future, it's just not to have that costly, laborsome process to doing it for this one particular item and not for any of the other items.
So there's no plan that it's going to be a $3,000 fee next time someone wants to do it?
There's no plan to raise it whatsoever.
Any other questions about this? All right, bring the motion on Article 16 to a vote to adopt this amendment to drop the specific fee. All in favor? All opposed? It is, no, I think that's, you were opposed or in favor, sir?
Opposed.
Okay. It's unanimous, minus one.
Article 17, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the Merrimack zoning bylaw, Article 11, Office Light Industrial District, Section 11.4, uses and structures permitted by special permit, by the addition of subsection 11.4.14 to read, dispensaries for supplying marijuana for medical purposes by prescription and as regulated by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that if someone wants to put a dispensary for marijuana for medical purposes in Merrimack, it'll be in the light industrial zone. Any questions or discussions as to that? Yes, ma'am.
Where is?
Where is the light industrial zone? Okay. Sandy, can you kind of give a basic outline of where it is?
Yes, the light industrial zone is the area that's on, if you go on East Main Street on the south side towards 495, there's that section in there where the post office, for instance, is in the light industrial zone. It's that area in there, you know, think of where the wastewater treatment plan is, going east of there is the light industrial zone, up until where North Street is, the mythical North Street, because North Street really doesn't exist anymore, Bear Hill Road is a better indicator, that's across from where North Street is.
And does the industrial zone front on 110 on Main Street?
Yeah, on federal way, but, yes, it does, it does touch, I'm trying to think that, does it touch 110, or do we have the rural highway in between along?
The rural highway goes back 300 feet.
On that side, too, right. So it doesn't actually touch on 110. You would have to, you know, if something gets developed in this area, it would have to have, you know, an access road that goes back to it, because the first 300 feet all along 110 is rural highway zone, not light industrial.
Any other questions about this? Yes, sir.
Why do we want to make provisions for marijuana?
I'm sorry. Why do we want to do what?
Why do we want to make a provision for it?
Okay, the question is, why do we need to provide for that at all?
And this is actually sort of a preventative measure. If people remember back when we did this also for the adult entertainment zone, it's the same thing, and by the way, it's the light industrial zone where also adult entertainment is allowed. If you've been following this in the press, you know, after this was a vote, you know, approved through a voter referendum, several towns did say, well, we don't care now that we all voted in favor of doing this, we don't want it in our town, and said, you know, we'll just prohibit it throughout town. The Attorney General has ruled you cannot do that, and we knew that. We knew that when we did the adult entertainment one. You can't prohibit it entirely. You can specify where, in fact, it can be zoned and where it can happen in town, and you can put on restrictions, and because the State Department of Public Health was going to come down with all its various provisions, we didn't want to try and put any kind of regulatory action around this until we saw what they came out with, but on the other hand, we didn't want to sit back and wait until that came out before specifying which zone we felt it was appropriate to possibly be in. Frankly, I doubt very, very much anybody's going to come to Merrimack. There's only 32 going to be allowed across the state, no more than five in any one county. The likelihood of one of the five in Essex County being in Merrimack is very, very slim, but we wanted to take a sort of proactive measure here and at least specifying where that would be, should anyone be interested in opening such a facility in Merrimack.
Any other questions? Bring this to a vote to amend the light industrial district to allow for these marijuana dispensaries for medical purposes. All in favor? All opposed? It is approved unanimously.
Article 18, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the Merrimack zoning bylaw, Article 4, Village Residential District, Section 4.5, Prohibited Uses, subsection 4.5.5 to read, "The Dispensing of Medical Marijuana," and the addition of 4.5.6 to read, "Any Use Not Explicitly Provided in the Bylaw." Article 5, Suburban Residential District, Section 5.5, Prohibited Uses, amending subsection 5.5.5 to read, "The Dispensing of Medical Marijuana," and the addition of 5.5.6 to read, "Any Use Not Explicitly Provided For in this Bylaw." Article 6, Agricultural Residential District, Section 6.5, Prohibited Uses, amending subsection 6.5.5 to read, "The Dispensing of Medical Marijuana," and the addition of 6.5.6 to read, "Any Use Not Explicitly Provided For in this Bylaw." Article 7, Lake Aditash District, Section 7.5, Prohibited Uses, amending subsection 7.5.2 to read, "The Dispensing of Medical Marijuana," and the addition of subsection 7.5.3 to read, "Any Use Not Explicitly Provided For in this Bylaw." Article 8, Village Center District, Section 8.4, Prohibited Uses, subsection 8.4.10, amend to read, "The Dispensing of Medical Marijuana," and the addition of subsection 8.4.11 to read, "Any Use Not Explicitly Provided For in this Bylaw." Article 9, Rural Highway, Section 9.4, Prohibited Uses, amending subsection 9.4.5 to read, "The Dispensing of Medical Marijuana," and the addition of subsection 9.4.6 to read, "Any Use Not Explicitly Provided For in the Bylaw." Article 10, Highway Services District, Section 10.4, Prohibited Uses, to amend subsection 10.4.6 to read, "The Dispensing of Medical Marijuana," and the addition of subsection 10.4.7 to read, "Any Use Not Explicitly Provided For in this Bylaw."
Second.
All right, we moved and seconded, for those who weren't following along carefully, you probably realize that this would prohibit the distribution, the dispensing of medical marijuana in all the other parts of town that aren't the light industrial. Any questions? Are you all in favor of the motion on Article 18? All opposed? It's approved unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the Merrimack zoning bylaw, Article 11, Office Light Industrial District, Section 11.4, Uses and Structures Permitted by Special Permit, with the addition of 11.4.14, quote, "Commercial solar power installations of 250 kilowatt or larger of rated nameplate capacity," close quote, and the addition of 11.4.15, quote, "Commercial wind power installations not to exceed three turbines," close quote. Also to amend Article 9, Rural Highway District, Section 9.3, Uses and Structures Permitted by Special Permit, by the addition of 9.3.17, quote, "Commercial solar power installations of 250 kilowatt or larger of rated nameplate capacity located at least 300 feet from the central line of West Main Street, Route 110," close quote.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded to allow a, allows two zones where you can have commercial solar power installations and commercial wind power installations. Any questions about this? Yes, yeah. Can you use the mic in front of you there?
I'm having a hard time seeing where the restriction would be, on what part of West Main Street. Is it near residential properties?
Well, the question is, is the rural, the rural highway district, and it says within 300, with...
Well, the question is, is the rural highway district, and it says within 300, at least 300 feet of the center line of West Main Street, so what does that mean, Sandy?
What that means, actually, it's a way of specifying a certain area, because the rural highway district goes both on East Main Street and West Main Street from the center of town. On East Main Street, it is only 300 feet deep on either side of the, from the center line, and so therefore, all of East Main Street is excluded. On West Main Street, it is 300 feet deep on the north side, but on the south side towards 495, it goes all the way to 495. So effectively, this is just setting it up that it can be in that area, 300 feet set in from 110 to 495 on the west end of town.
So it has to be more than 300 feet south of 110?
Right.
Can I ask additional?
Yes.
Why was, was there some rationale tied to the 300 feet?
Right, the 300 feet was to exclude the rest of what was actually rural highway.
No, I'm talking about the effects on residential property owners.
No, 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 it was totally, it was totally to really get it to be, to specify it in a way that it became a subsection of what is zoned rural highway and to exclude the rest of what's zoned rural highway.
But... I know, but I'm saying, once this is passed, isn't it feasible that if it is passed, there is a potential for solar energy things to be installed within the 300 feet with no consideration to the actual environmental impact on houses across the highway?
I guess if...
Okay, look, the question is, it can't get any closer to 110 than 300 feet, all right? Why not 500 feet or 800 feet?
Because then it wouldn't be rural highway district.
Even in the West Main area?
Except in the West Main area.
That's the area we're talking about.
So it's 300, and this is only for commercial, and there's all, see, this just allows it to go through a special permitting process. All those other specifications as far as buffering the abutters and providing proper protection to people would be handled through the special permitting process, that would be public hearings before the planning board. This is just, it can't be done at all anywhere else, but with a special permit, going through that public hearing process, with the abutters being notified of that and having an opportunity to express their viewpoint, and the planning board having an ability to put, you know, other restrictions on things, it can happen in that area that's set back 300 feet south of 110 up to 495 on the west side of town.
Okay.
I'm just concerned that in fact, due consideration hasn't been built into this to accommodate residential property owners who fall just outside of that 300-foot parameter. And again, I'm just thinking to myself, two sides, I live up in that area, and I would probably be affected by it, so I have a personal interest in it, but secondly, I'm just thinking, are we opening ourselves, the town, up for potentially ramifications if we pass such?
Well, once again, it gets to be something we can't prohibit entirely. We wanted to specify where it could be, because these are public utilities, they can be public utilities if they're being set up for commercial use, and so once again, we just wanted to specify where those potentially could be and really keeping them close to 495.
All right, I think your concern has been made clear, so... Yes.
I was wondering why the commercial wind power installations are not also included in that area.
Okay, the question was, the part about rural highway only allows solar power, not wind turbines, and the question was, why not wind turbines?
Because, yes, solar power generally, I think people regard, if you've seen, you know, where solar power installation is, is being less intrusive than what wind turbines are, and so that's why the wind turbines are only provided for in the office light industrial district, but the solar power, we saw as there being two potential options for that to be.
Any other questions or discussion? I will bring the motion on Article 19 to a vote, that's to approve amendments to the Office and Light Industrial District and the Rural Highway District. All in favor of the bylaw? All opposed? It's unanimous minus two. Adopted.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the Merrimack zoning bylaw, Article 4 Village Residential District, Section 4.2, permitted uses and structures, the addition of subsection 4.2.11 to read, quote, "rooftop residential solar installations." Article 5 Suburban Residential District, Section 5.2, permitted uses and structures, the addition of subsection 5.2.8 to read, quote, "rooftop residential solar installations." Article 6 Agricultural Residential District, Section 6.2, permitted uses and structures, the addition of subsection 6.2.11 to read, "rooftop residential solar installations." Article 7 Lake Attitash District, Section 7.2, permitted uses and structures, the addition of subsection 7.2.5 to read, quote, "rooftop residential solar installations." Article 8 Village Center District, Section 8.2, permitted uses and structures, the addition of subsection 8.2.5.4 to read, quote, "rooftop residential solar installations," installations?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded as to this article to allow rooftop residential solar installations in other districts in town, the Village Residential, Suburban Residential, Agricultural Residential, Lake Attitash District, and Village Center District. Are there any questions or discussion about allowing this? Yes, sir. You want to get up to talk to the mic?
So is it my understanding as a homeowner, I can only put solar panels on my roof, not on my property?
It's, this bylaw is talking about rooftop residential solar installations, so until this is passed, you can't put anything up. Now you could put up something, so it reads.
Not only rooftop, that's correct.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
The previous matter had a special permit, which allowed the planning board to take a lot of things into consideration, including the bottoms. This is just a permit use.
That's correct.
I don't think it should be, I think it should be a special permit, it's allowed at all.
Mr. Sinabaldi, would you like to speak?
What, that was a commercial application, it was a residential design, primarily for how it was some portion of the home, on the whole, how it was used there for a certain point at one point in time, where you make a fine line of whether or not it's primary use of the structure, that's the reason why we even want structures in the guy, what the panels, because now all of a sudden, it's like a primary use of the property, and then the accessory is being a whole of the rest, because at some point you make a new way to be using it, so, because it's a fine line, so, if you make a rooftop structure for somebody, a control or a large space, because they need to be prior to what they have to clean, and this is not a requirement, we had government control or a necessary requirement. I don't think that's...
No, I understand, but it goes a little bit to the first question. There's a difference between rooftop and everything, but there's a difference between no presidential permit and having a special permit, it's two different things. Does anyone want to speak to why there's no special permit requirement?
Well, somewhat in this, and I can certainly have Bob speak mortis, because he was the one who brought this to our attention, but the, to get a special permit is actually not cheap. I mean, we require you to fill out an application in doing that, in which you have to have engineering drawings specifying things, and we in turn would have the planning board's engineer review it, and so all that, we're talking about something that starts getting into the thousands of dollars, and so that was some of the thinking, when it's for personal use on your own rooftop, that isn't interfering with your neighbors in any kind of instrumental way, and it is probably some of the technology of the future and the direction things are going, that we didn't want to add that extra financial burden, and in turn, we would just leave it up to the building inspector in specifying, you know, what in fact is good building practice, and certainly, for instance, part of that is, you know, to make sure the structure can accommodate that, but to leave it up as a building code issue and not something that would require the owner to go through the procedure for a special permit.
Are there any other questions about this particular article? Yes, sir, can you come forward?
I think we can amend the Article 5 by law, especially for each one.
Well, sir, as I said at the outset, you can only vote these up or down, because you can't change what a public hearing decided on it, so it's a yes or a no, there's really not the option you're asking for. People have anything else they want to say before we bring this to a vote? All right, the motion on Article 20 is to adopt a bylaw change to allow, as a permitted use, rooftop residential solar installations in the Village Residential District, Suburban Residential, Agricultural Residential, Lake Attitash District, and the Village Center District, which is pretty much all the districts in town except for the ones in the last article, rural highway and light industrial. Is that correct? All in favor? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? All right, well, I see three opposed, there is certainly two-thirds, so the matter is adopted 50 to three. Folks, I just want to advise you, we have really not very much left to do, but we only have five minutes to do it, because we do not have 100 people present, we cannot continue after 10 o'clock. But we'll push on one by one, or we can wait, the four things that are left, the five articles are left, four of which have to do with, well, they're sort of a package, not a package, but they're all sort of related, we're done with the bylaws on zoning. So my suggestion would be to leave the five for the next time, so we can come for 20 minutes and not just come for three or four, because we can't do all five in five minutes. But we'll give it a try. Article 21, is there waving of the motion, and I can read you what it's about, because you have it in front of you, the motion as to Article 21. All in favor of waiving the reading? All right, so this motion on Article 21 would accept a state statute, Section 5N of Chapter 59, allowing a special program for veterans that work off part of their veteran's tax bills. Any questions about this? All in favor of adopting this statute? All opposed? It is approved unanimously. As to number 22 you have before you? A motion about taking bieminent domain easements to do work along Route 110. Is there a motion to waive the reading of that? All in favor of waiving the reading? All opposed? I'll summarize it, this would be to take easements to do work along Route 110, the West Main Street, in connection with the highway project known as the Town Square Project, I think, as described in the sets of plans. Are there any questions or discussion about this? All in favor of the motion? All opposed? It's adopted unanimously. Next, in Article 23, it's asked that we submit a, for a special law to the legislature, the general court. Can we waive the reading of this law and this motion? All in favor? All opposed? All right, to summarize, as it's pointed, as it's set out for you in the Finance Committee report in full, this law would allow retired police officers to be used beyond their age of retirement, but not beyond the age of 70, as long as they meet certain other requirements for the police department. Anyone have any questions about this? Discussion? All right, the motion is to submit this to the general court so that the state can pass a special law applying to Merrimack. All in favor? All opposed? It's approved unanimously. Want to read the motion? 24, it's just three lines.
I move, Mr. Moderator.
Yep.
I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of MGL Chapter 41, 97A inclusive, relative to the powers and duties of the police chief in making suitable regulations governing the police department.
Second.
Are there any questions about adopting this state statute? All in favor? All opposed? It's unanimously adopted. Number 25, people waived the reading of this motion on number 25, this regards the firefighters, a little bit similar to the police department, one we just did. All in favor of waiving the reading? All opposed? All right, this is a parallel to the one on the police department, that would ask us to submit a request for a special law to the legislature to allow the use of firefighters who have retired but not beyond the age of 70, as set forth here, and keep useful firefighters still working. All in favor? All opposed? It is adopted unanimously. And we now come to the last, number 26. People waived the reading of motion number 26? All in favor? All opposed? All right, the motion on Article 26 is to authorize the selectmen to petition to the general court to ask the legislature for a special law to make a regional Veterans Services District, which would include Merrimack and at least one of the following communities, Newburyport, Amesbury, Salisbury, Newbury, and so forth, provided the general court can make any clerical changes to the bill and accept it as we've submitted it. Any questions or discussion about putting, asking for legislation for a regional Veterans Service District? I'll bring that to a vote. All in favor? All opposed? It is passed unanimously. Well, we did it, folks. We've completed all the work for the annual town meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? We stand adjourned, there will be no follow-up session. Good evening.
Well, we never know.
All right. I don't like this one. So it's a... I don't think it's... Yeah. It's...